To the United States of America. And to everybody from which you stand on your feet, under God, in this, in this world.
Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Here.
Mr. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Thorndyne? Madam Mayor?
Here. Proof of agenda, but before we get a motion to approve, we need to amend the agenda and add eight resignation letters. I get a motion to add.
Motion to add the resignation. I second.
Second.
Now can I get, I want Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do Old Business Furlough Town Call.
Mayor.
Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve. Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Now we get the approval. Okay, now can we go to Old Business? Oh, wait, before we go on to Old Business, there's something I'd like to say. You all asked for a new board, you got a new board. You asked for a new mayor, you have a new mayor. We ask that you allow us to do our job, that's all we're asking. We're not, um, we have a lot on our plate that previous board had not addressed, and that's what we're trying to do. So we ask that you give us the time and work with us, because we are doing the best we can. So with that said, we'd like to go to Old Business Furlough Town Call. We'd like to talk on, um, we were discussing cutting hours.
Right.
At this point in time, as much as the town needs to save some money, I just don't think it's feasible. I mean, these gals are jumping through hoops right now. Um, if we cut hours, who is going to do everything that needs to be done? That's something where we left off.
Right.
I initially was for cutting the hours, but with his new training that Ms. Adams is talking about.
Right.
There's no way we could.
Well, and that's just it. Nobody's seeing these emails still coming from the CPA Jim Ray, you know, to try to get these audits done, that has these two jumping through hoops on top of everything else that we have to get done to try to get these audits done. I mean, these emails are this long, this checklist, you know, 20 items that he needs, that she's having to send off to him, that she's having to dig up, that she's having to dig up, the whole reports and whole documentation.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of going to be everywhere on their plate right now.
I make a motion that we can.
This is not saying it might not change in the future, but right at this moment, we can't afford to cut anybody's hours, that's all I'm saying.
Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Town Judge, I can table that, I didn't get that one.
Mayor.
Sure.
Town Judge is in a winning position. All the board has to do is hold on, but we should retain it for the rest of the year.
Or retain.
That's all they have to do.
Or retain it, shall we get Marshall? Well, I mean, I think the point is, is it possible to just use him as needed? Do we have to pay him every month when he's doing absolutely nothing for us?
Right.
That's the question. I don't think that we should, I think that, um, we should put that on our next board meeting and, or can you go down there now? So you. But we need to check the legalities of that. Do we have to have a judge on retainer at all times, or can we just retain one as, on, as needed basis?
We don't have a marshal.
Right.
We don't have one.
When's the last time we had a, I mean, a marshal?
Twenty-two, I want to say.
Two years ago?
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two.
You want me to need it?
Well, I, I think we need to check the, the.
Okay. So table, so our regular meeting? Or after we talk to an attorney?
Yeah.
Talk to the attorney?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to table, uh, Item B, Town Judge?
Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
I've seen health insurance.
And so I emailed a couple of people, um, one that actually works with us, or can you guys hear me?
Clear.
And, um, pretty much they told me I have, they can't, they couldn't give me anything in general. I had to give them name, date of birth, I had to give them the, the actual person that is going to grant cover. Otherwise, they couldn't give me any information. So I even asked if they could just give me something in general, you know, what the employee would be paying, what the employer was paying, if, you know, if anything, just kind of break it down. And they tell me they couldn't do that.
Wasn't the one person that's covered, did they obtain new insurance? That's my understanding. So we're not paying that, that amount anymore, that $2,000? Through the. No, and that was $2,000 a month. Yeah, I mean, that's like $24,000. Okay, so that's been eliminated. So we've saved now, saved the town $24,000 a year by eliminating that cost. The person that's covered has coverage now, correct? Okay. So can I get a motion to? Oh, okay.
So are we not going to cover any insurance for any employees now? I mean, I know there was a motion made back in, um, in 2019, that basically we for, forfeited raises, we gave up raises because the town was going to cover our health insurance. And that was motioned in a meeting on March 26th, 2018.
So I think that brings up raises all the way around, which is a whole other issue that's not on this agenda that we can't really discuss tonight.
I'm just talking about the health insurance, like, are they going to cover maybe a portion of it, top that off, or?
I think.
That's what I'm asking.
At the time, right now, that's something we're going to have to look into, but for now, we don't have the money. But it doesn't mean that it can't, you know, come up again, you know, and, something that we can look at again. So do we have to make a motion to no longer cover the town employees and amend whatever she just read off then? Do we have to reverse that?
Yes.
So we have to, we have to forego this because a motion, well, it's on this agenda, it's on this agenda because health insurance is really stating that you're not going to cover any more than.
So then we can make a motion to amend not to carry the health insurance? If it's on this agenda and she's saying we can, then I just, I motioned temporarily that we have to, we, obviously, we can re, maybe discuss this again after the New Year, but for now, um, I motion that the town no longer carries or pays for health insurance for town employees. Can I get a second?
My second, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Who does that stuff is going to happen, sir? Health insurance. Stephanie says she has one.
He got health insurance.
She does.
Yeah, but she did, Sarah. Apparently.
Oh, man, that's a good. Yes.
That's what we said, we would revisit it at a later date. Water calling. We're back to that one. Without legal counsel, I suggest that we keep doing what we're doing, we can't change it.
I have a different opinion.
Okay.
Am I okay in this? As long as water is coming down that pipe, we'll be charged with fee, right? If there's no water coming down the pipe, we shouldn't be charged with fee.
I can remove.
But we shouldn't be hauling water. I don't think we should be, because if somebody else comes up to that same situation, we're going to get stuck hauling water to them too.
I get what you're saying, Mr. Romero, that was something that, but the situation was already created.
Well, we're, we're now within change of it. That's what I'm saying.
But I think we need legal counsel, right?
Okay, legal counsel.
I can, you know, once we get legal counsel, then we can, you know, check it down, so that we're covered.
Think we're in a situation where we're trying to save money for what we can.
We are.
And that is costing us a lot.
It is.
And so we need to look at this thing, see if there's some place in how we.
Well, I mean, the very next thing on the agenda is the attorney. If we can get this attorney hired, we can talk to them ASAP about it.
Another thing we were wondering if we had a spare water tank, it was well over in the yard.
Right.
It's a 250 or 300 gallon tank.
That was brought up too.
So if we ever did a utility person in here that has a valid, all other driver's license, we can have them start hauling the water.
Hauling water from where?
Shouldn't have.
Shouldn't have, well, I think once we get, ask the attorney, and then I'll tell you guys what else we did. So then we might, I'll have an answer maybe to this situation. So if we can, uh, just continue doing what we're doing, temporarily, and we're talking less than we, or we can have an answer. We just, I think we have to talk to the attorney about this.
So we take. So we're going to take a little water haul in this room here.
Till Thursday, or next week. And on week two, we will hopefully have a result by then, but until we have legal counsel, I can't. I don't have anybody else to do it. I get a motion to table the water calling until the next regular board meeting?
I motion to table the water all until the next meeting at the end of this one.
I second it. Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Okay, under new ideas. We, I talked to this gentleman from Apposmus Law Firm, his name is Andy. He is a municipal court judge for the county of Danin, he has his own law firm, it's his whole family. I think he has two sons, his wife and, I'm not sure if it's a daughter, but he all have a copy of his resume. He's a city attorney for Fort Lucton. He was provided as a referral from, uh. Peter, from Peter, the attorney we spoke to. Did you just by chance do any due diligence on him, do some quick searches or anything on him? Everything looks good. Crazy. And, you know, him, and, and actually, Peter's the one that recommended him, and I spoke to both of them. Peter set up a conference, and so I called in, and I'm the three of us, and so he gave me a little bit of his, he does court for the town of Sheridan, like on Thursday nights, he's the judge, and he does a lot of municipal law. So I thought that would be a benefit for this town. His rate of pay is $200 an hour. That's, that's actually, I heard somebody say, wow, that's actually cheap considering attorneys, I mean, top-notch attorneys charge five, $600 an hour. And hopefully, once we get some of these legal issues that we have cleaned up, we won't need a whole lot of them. Uh, what's he required for retainer? He didn't say. He, and he, um, told me, the same thing that's on here on that overview about him, his law firm, he told me a little bit of what he does, and he said if, um, he would like to come out and meet the board if they choose to hire him, and he'd like to meet with us, and, um, after that, I mean, I don't, we figured about 20 hours, it could be less than that after, but for now, I think it's 20 hours is safe to say, if I did, we're 20 hours a month till we get, and then after that, he can just do Zoom.
Right.
I, yeah, all for it, we need representation, we need it now, um, we have a little bit of cushion in the account to put retainer down, so I make a motion to hire him, if someone needs more time, by all means, but I'm putting the motion out there.
I think first, we should be able to talk in every form inside, whether or not we should go in or not.
He's, he's telling to come out and, and meet the board.
But even if he doesn't want to zoom, I, I don't care.
No, he's, he wants to come and meet everybody personally. Okay, can he come like this week or Monday or? I don't know, I can, I can call tomorrow or email him tomorrow or tonight, and ask him, okay, so then I withdraw that motion, then we hire him. Yes, until we talk to him. So. Yeah, like, as soon as possible, and if he can't, if he can't physically be here in the next week, then say we want to do Zoom. Okay. So can I get a motion to table this till, um, I can arrange a meeting when Andy can come and meet the board, or meet the board through Zoom?
A motion to table this, let's go, we can get a meeting.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Then we have Item B, DOLA, USDA. Gerald and I met with, uh, DOLA and USDA last Thursday, and we have good news. They brought, they proposed a resolution of project, and in that resolution of project, they're going to go forward with augmentation pond. We're going to set up an account for, with two signers. One would be someone from the council, and then someone from USDA. And they're thinking that they're going to bring back SGM back to the table to discuss what needs to be done. They have a punch list, correct? To get done. They feel like at this time, SGM would come back to the table, there's a lot of money on the table for them. And in order for them to get that money, they have to come back and finish the job. I'm all for them stepping in in any way that they feel that they need to, you know, that they see fit. If it gets it pushed forward. And we will also be able to pay CFID and get them taken care of. They, I, I believe Dwayne was going to contact CFID and try to make some agreement, you know, or, I, no, I think USDA, Dwayne was going to do it, and set something up with, um, CFID to hold off, and, you know, and they're thinking, if we can get this all together, we can be done with that augmentation pond by Thanksgiving, and everybody paid. That's great news. So what do we need, I mean, what do we need to do as a board to help facilitate this? Well, first of all, we need to appoint somebody as a signer. We have to have a signer to sign with USDA, because they're going, she's hoping by the end of the month to have the account set up. But they need a resolution from the council with a signer, so that they can present it to the bank. A motion to, a point, and let's just. No, no.
Where is a resolution out there that has, who can sign for all this stuff? Mayor, Mayor Proton, and the town.
Gerald was in on it at the beginning, so he knows what's going on.
So what we need to do is, we need, we need to come up with a way of either amending that resolution.
Or it has to be one of them.
Yeah. Or.
Let me just say, the mayor is, she's more available than I am.
Excuse me? I got a job today.
Whoa.
No, I'm kidding.
You know, I'm gone from 5 o'clock in the morning till 5:00, 5:30 every day, so if someone comes in here and needs me to sign something, I won't be here, so you're the one. So I make a motion that a legitimate be the signer.
My second.
Everybody keep in mind that USDA is the second signer on this, and will be overseeing everything, so there's checks and balances. Set up, and it's going to be USDA and the town of Aguilar on this. Motion. Rowe Coffee?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
I think we can also add, if we get this done, like, Dwayne thinks that we can get this done and everybody paid by Thanksgiving, we will be able to lift the moratorium on the water taps and be able to move forward. No? Why?
We don't have the water. So why give water taps out if you don't have water?
Are they going to haul the water in to fill it back up, because it's all gone?
That, that.
He did say, right?
That augmentation pond over there isn't to supplement the agglor town water.
I guess I'm confused about that, what is the augmentation pond for?
For irrigation.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the water supply around the town.
Irrigation of what? The gasolage ditch.
Farmers around.
Provides the, uh, surrounding.
Yeah, no, that has nothing to do. But, you know, our water supply, there's nothing wrong with our water supply, I'm talking about our water tanks up here. You know, unless we get leaky out, then, then we got a problem, but.
But we also have the state telling us that we're, you got to watch how much of the water we use.
But if we get the pond finished, completed, as protected, that will be lifted, correct, is what he told us. The state would lift it, and there wouldn't be any more water restrictions.
Oh, you have to get your tanks fixed.
So we're going by, um, what he told us, and then once we do all this, Tara Marshall told us that the town could then move forward in applying for grant money to replace the tanks.
That's true.
But on the loan from the USDA, they're going to give us till 2026, 2027, and all, during that time, it's given us time, hopefully, we're going to have to check on that, to pay off the loan or come close to paying off whatever else loan we have, and so this loan here would, we would only pay the interest for two years, and then we start paying the payment. What's the interest rate?
Something, yeah.
I want to say 2.4, and the reason I say that is, is Tara mentioned it, and she said that when that grant money, the 100,000 or 200,000, remember, and then they pulled it? The 2.4 annual? Yeah. And what's the loan amount? Right now? Or what will it be, what is it now, or what is it? I don't know exactly how much it's going to be, because the money that's already in there, it will pay off, is it, did he say, um, that Colorado trust also? So.
That's right.
And the only one we'll owe is USDA. But in one of the meetings that we had, didn't they say, the one lady that was sitting here said that there was a possibility that Aguilar could get a forgiveness, and that would wipe out. Yeah, what's required to get the forgiveness? We don't know yet, we have to get over that part. So let's just say that the loan ends up being, let's say, $2 million, 2.9% annual would only be $58,000. Um, you know, 2.9%, usually government loans like that are, you know, pretty low, um, so that's not horrible. I'm just, I'm just throwing a number out there, if, you know, let's say the loan was $2 million, then that's what the interest would be over the next two years. And, and she's like Tara said, um, once we get this augmentation pond completed, there's a million dollar grant that we could apply for with DOLA.
To fix the tanks.
To start on the tanks.
Yeah.
Or the tank.
So we need to look at then possibly getting a, a real grant writer. And we need to start searching for that person.
I almost bet that Tara could probably help us with that.
She is going, she offered services for, to help with writing, budgeting, doing that stuff next month.
Okay.
So.
Good news. I don't think there's anything we need to motion right now. That was just a tough announcement.
You already did on the signer. That's the only thing we needed to get for DOLA, well, USDA really. And so then Sarah will send, you know, Jennifer, um, a copy of the minutes.
That we did the resolution to have you as the signer.
Great. And then they will take care of the rest for us. They will, and like they said, they'll bring SGM again if they want to come to the table and go over everything.
Please, yeah, please thank Tara for us for jumping in and.
Oh, I did. All of them I did. I'll tell you what, that was a relief. That's, that helps Aguilar start moving forward.
Right.
And I think it's going to really be important to get SGM back to the table. Because if we solve SGM, we've got a pretty long punch this again.
Right. You know, as I understand it, there's like serious design flaws in that augmentation pond. And it should be up to them to fix it and not at our cost because it's their engineering and design issue.
And. Yeah, hundred and fifty five thousand dollars that was misplaced or however that was handled, that will be investigated. And so he figured the attorney general for sure is going to be one of them and it's, um, how do we have a CPI, right? He says. And so it's not one that they're going to notify us until they're coming, they're going to come.
Just come and.
And they just come with subpoenas and.
Warrants.
All, all records are, like I said, you know, they're accessible to them and we'll work with them however to figure out where that money went. And I think that once Angela, I did mention that, that we were going to start redoing the book. Um, I think once we get to that point, I think Angela and I will help in trying to find out where some of that money went.
Just, well, we're caught on, since we're talking about that subject, I mean, we have kind of started. We, we picked up QuickBooks Online, but I'm still talking, in fact, I talked to another CPA today from another client and she's local. She lives up the canyon and works out of Trinidad. And she does have a lot of experience with fund accounting. And so I'm still going back and forth between QuickBooks Online and QuickBooks Desktop. The problem is QuickBooks Desktop, Intuit is trying to move away from that. And so even that Clerkbooks that we looked at, um, you know, they only work with QuickBooks Desktop. And so Clerkbook, and they even emailed me back and said, we had a board meeting today and we're not doing anything with anybody. So I'm still trying to research it. And if nothing else, we will push forward with QuickBooks Online. And we can always, you can always download those spreadsheets. You can download the data. Um, so I think we need to, you know, figure out in the next week or two. I think we just need to go ahead and push forward and build what we can build. And it will reveal, it will reveal in the last, you know, eighteen month or nineteen months. You know, if we're going to go back to the beginning of 2023, we're going to be able to see a lot.
I told her that. And so I don't know, you know, once we get to that point, um, maybe by that time they'll start coming in or I don't know. And then we'll have at least some answers or as we go, we'll start seeing more of where that money went. Okay, we need to get an ORC operator.
What is an ORC operator? Water? Water operator? Water and wastewater filled? Water treatment, distribution, collection? So what do we need to do to do that?
We need to get a water license. We have Colorado Department of Health at Davis, thirty days in which we have to have a certified water license, water operator. In your packet, you will see. You will find the two. We have, we can start with Anthony Coca. He'll come up, please. Thank you.
Hello.
I'm Melinda, Frank, Carol, Sarah, Monica, Angela, and Bob.
How you doing?
Hey, tell us a little bit of that about yourself and then we'll ask you a question.
Okay. I actually started like in nineteen eighty seven at the wastewater plant. Well, I started before then in the Navy making drinking water. I was saltwater. And then started the wastewater plant in Trinidad. I was there twelve years. And then I was at the Colorado Department of Corrections for twenty-two. Also working for, uh, myself on a couple contracts and then Rainy Environmental Compliance out of Firestone, which I still do. And I've had, like I said, been there. I had Fort Lyon. Right now I've got wastewater and, uh, we have Thresfaya's up by La Vida Pass. A couple other water systems we had in Pueblo, but we don't have them no more. Uh, the Seamen Plant had them, Fort Lyon, Vilas, several places. I've been doing it for like thirty some years. Um, I'm actually in La Vida right now. And then I forget, one time when Joe first got on, twenty some years ago, I helped him out for a couple of months here. And he showed me a couple of things and I don't remember much of it. So I have, um, Class C water, uh, one distribution, a D industrial wastewater, eight wastewater and four collections.
I see you have here that you're asking for twenty-five, would you be willing to go down?
Well, when I got talked to her, I mentioned about like part-time. Because if I went like, I know she had said twenty-two is like a twenty some thousand dollar kind of pay a month. I mean, a year for me. And, uh, because I know like, I know a lot of the small towns struggle and, I mean, there's such a demand in Colorado. There's like, I think a hundred and eighty operators short in Colorado. And people aren't, they're not going nowhere. Walsomberg had the same problem. La Vida had the same problem for over a year.
You're the water operator for La Vida also, correct?
No, I'm just a wastewater. They have another operator that came from Coachara. And then the guy from Raton went to Coachara. So everybody, they're just going all over because I mean, you could, I could go somewhere tomorrow if I want.
Right. I understand that. Ray, he mentioned to me how difficult it is for the rural communities to find water operators now. And their, um, what they're charging to lease a water license is also extremely high.
Yeah, because the company I deal with, just for, from what I heard at Primero High School, he charged over twenty some hundred a month for me to go once a week. And then I know, uh, Pueblo's higher, uh, Walsomberg, they don't have nobody. He's doing that. Another guy's doing the wastewater because they can't find nobody nowhere. And who else, who else? Uh, like I said, La Vida was another one. A lot of the towns, Boone, Avondale, they're in the same.
Right.
So. But like I said, I mean, I don't know, I would, you know, be willing to do it, you know, like part-time. But I mean, I don't know how you guys would, you know, require that.
Anthony, that's was going to be my question for you, you know, uh, like part-time. What do you feel like you need to be here? I mean, in order to make everything kind of work right?
I know like, uh, like you guys had Luke James, right?
We've used him in the past.
Yeah. And I don't think he ever showed up, did he?
He, he used to come, but I, I haven't heard his name around here for quite some time.
Yeah, because I know he's like.
He's, um, he's had a, a proposal for to the town for the use of his water license. So that's next. So after interviewing Mr. Coca, um, you can look at Luke James' proposal. And then we have a gentleman here that's willing to work full-time. Is that what you said?
Yes.
And it's my understanding he's willing to work towards a water license. Is that what you said?
Do you have a certification of it? Because I know he'll just need like a, what is the water one? Is it a D? I don't know. I, I didn't look at the.
I have, let's see, there's AA level four, level four class. Oh, no, that's his license.
Yeah.
That's what you use from the services of Luke James would be A. A and then he's got level four for distribution.
Yeah. And see, this is a level one distribution. The wastewater's D. And then might be a one collections if they even have that. I didn't look at it. I was gonna, and then maybe, uh, D water. It could be. Which I mean, he could, I know the requirements are like thirty days of that and then you could take the test and. Well, I mean, I'd be, you know, uh, one, one of the things I do is I go to Coke Dale once a week for the wastewater and the water. Um, you know, you're required um, a bacterial sample once a month. And then like TTHMs in August, which I don't know, I don't think it was done from what I heard. Yeah, for high, uh, some acids and all that. HA five TTHM. It's due every August from people and some other ones are.
You know, we did the lead and copper.
Did you?
That's what we knew about.
So what are you saying is at least once a week, once a month, and then maybe some quarterly stuff? I mean, what do you really think the total hours, let's say every quarter would be?
I would. I would say if it was once a week, maybe depending on if anything went on, just, uh, three to four hours a week maybe or, I don't know, and then he gets on. You know, because I know, like you said, you need somebody right away.
Okay, I think that can work within our budget.
Okay, before, we're getting Steve?
Yep.
And, um, we'll get back.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Unless, is anybody else good for us?
I just have a suggestion just from working here. So basically, I mean, if we're just hiring him to get his, use his ORC license and he's willing to come once a week for just the license fee, I think would be reasonable because I mean, when we have the lead and copper samples, um, before us, you, us women in the office and whatever utility worker would do them. If he's willing to come down and do that just at his monthly rate and not charge extra. I know we were being charged a monthly rate and then any, um, an hourly rate for any time he had to come down here.
Yeah, see, a lot of guys do that.
Yeah. So if he was willing to come down just for his monthly fee and not charge an hourly rate, I mean, to do the lead and copper, the once a month, uh, bacterial sample, and then whatever other ones aren't coming up, I think that would be reasonable. And what we need is an ORC operator license to get the state offer back. But also if the operator was willing to come down here and not charge any more fees for the month, that would be great because other people refuse to have, um, charge to come down here. And they brought the sample bottles and said, here, this is what you do, but not willing to go actually do it. So I think we need somebody who's willing to let us use their license and come do the sample just as a working here.
Well, we never talked about monthly fee. We talked about hours of fee.
Right, right. Yeah, he's just talking straight twenty-five dollars an hour. Am I correct?
Yeah, because I put that on there because I didn't know.
Talking maybe four or five hours a week. I mean, that's, you know, a hundred dollars a week. That's four hundred dollars a month with no fee on top of that. You know, I mean, it might vary a little bit, but.
And that's what we weren't sure, Marty. Are you just wanting to, like, they use the water license or come work?
No, I, I would come in, you know, do that and, you know, check things. Because like I said, I had, I just came from La Vida, went over to pass with the Primero and come back up here. And I do the same thing with.
You would tell, let us use your, your water offer, like, the license for twenty-five dollars an hour when you come and do work?
Well, uh.
Is there a monthly fee attached with that?
Well, see, what I do like for Coke Dale, like I told you, I was talking about Raimi was like two thousand a month or higher. I always usually go like half, like, uh, I think Luke was what, like at eight hundred and he wouldn't show up or something?
And he basically charged the monthly fee and then if he came out here for any reason, he'd charge an hourly rate on top.
See, and that's what Mark does in Walsomberg. He charges like.
So what are you proposing to us then?
And that, that would be the wastewater too. Like, um, like Coke Dale, I, I charged him seven fifty for the wastewater once a week. And two fifty, no, seven seventy-five, I mean, seven hundred and seventy-five a month for wastewater and then two fifty for the water. Because over there, we just, uh, couple inspections.
And then the twenty-five dollars an hour on top of that.
Uh, probably not if I'm just doing that. I mean, I would, you know, like I teased Coke Dale, I was there four times last month. I took, gee, I just took a cut in pay, you know? Because we were putting in some new stuff and. And like you said, they, um, like who collects the sample now? You? And then you take it to Pueblo.
Sarah collected it this month early and took it to Pueblo. So basically we collect it and then whoever's going to Pueblo takes it.
Yeah, and usually I'll go to Pueblo sometimes once a week and I could always like get in the morning or even the day before, like Starkville, I just, I got there lead and copper. I dropped everything off on Saturday, picked it up Sunday, grabbed a sample and I took everything up, uh, yesterday. So I mean, like I said, I don't have a problem, you know, taking it up because I go up there, so.
Which we do have lead and copper samples due by December thirty-first, so. Which we do have lead and copper samples due by December thirty-first, so.
And how often do you do them?
About once every six months.
I've seen some once every three years, some every few months and.
Yeah, ours is. Because we've had so many water issues, might be why right now it has to be done like that.
Okay, yeah, I can believe that. I know when we started off at Coke Dale, it was a brand-new thing, they didn't even have, they had water there forever, but then after they started selling the water, they had to have an operator. And we had ten samples every six months, now we're down to five every three years now. And Starkville's the same way. So we're, like you said, once you get it, they'll start, you know, dropping them, but.
Did you come up with an amount, Angela? All right, that you rolled there, and you said how much?
Like I said, I, I'd probably do the same thing like, uh, Coke Dale, like seven seventy-five and two fifty.
So that's a thousand twenty-five a month?
Yeah.
And you're providing what services for it besides your license?
No, I'll come, I mean, uh, I, I haven't really looked at it too much to see if, if you guys had to take a PH, you had to take PH? On the water weekly or no?
Is it, is it the chlorine, testing with the chlorine?
Yeah, and you test the chlorine?
I think it's required once a week, but we do it daily just to make sure we're in the levels. The requirement is once a week, but they suggested I was going to do it daily.
Hmm, and then up there, do they still do the same thing, hook to the reservoir and pump the tank and then it comes down to the chlorine or?
No, the chlorine is now that they put the wells, so all the wells go into the, um, chlorine shop. And the chlorine gets fed into the water and then it feeds up to the reservoir.
Oh, okay, way different than before, okay.
So basically, I don't mean to interject, but basically for ten twenty-five, we'd be covered with water and wastewater with the state, correct?
Yeah.
And then he'd also be willing to come and do the testing, whatever, with no additional charge?
No.
No, so you wouldn't charge?
No.
Which I think is a good deal because before we were doing, um, a s- almost comparable rate, but it was just covering, uh, ORC license and not doing anything else, coming and taking the samples, and we weren't covered for wastewater at all.
Cuz at wastewater, you don't have to do no samples, no nothing, do you?
We never have, I mean, I don't.
I don't think so cuz you're not discharging, so. I know that one time you had to do and I haven't looked on, you know, what the permit number is on it to even look to.
Yeah, as far as I know, I don't know what the requirements are, but I know that when Joe was here, he said that the state was gonna start cracking down about the wastewater, not having an operator. So basically, we just clean it, I don't know if there's anything else you're supposed to do.
Air rig.
There's one that's broke down.
There's no air rigger in none of our projects.
And it's been like that, I thought since like two thousand one, which is like the solar is there, right?
Yeah, cuz I remember that cuz I saw that, the solar be way back. Cuz I know every place I've been, the aerators, all they do is burn up cuz they get so much junk. Cuz we have a new system that, uh, sinks down the bottom now and the air comes up and the motor's actually outside. They're, they're approving that now and we have one up in Johnstone and then got one in Coke Dale now that really works pretty good.
Okay, um, we're gonna move on to the next one.
Okay.
You know, unless somebody else, anybody have any questions that you could do for him?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next one I have is Luke James. And is he's worked for, or he's the county bagular who's used his water license before. Um, we will be billed at six hundred dollars a month through the end of twenty twenty-four. And after that, it, it will increase to eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. And anytime when he does the onsite services, the travel time will be eighty-five dollars an hour.
Where's Man, Manzanola, Colorado?
East of Peville.
East of Peville, so we're talking well over an hour right there then, how far east of Peville?
I'm not sure.
Does he charge him mileage too?
No.
Just a flat rate of eighty-five dollars per hour and eight, but so we have I think we're done with September, so October, November, December, so three months at six hundred dollars. And if he has to come out here, it's eighty-five dollars an hour and I don't know, what is he normally charged when he comes? How many hours does he bill you for?
Um, two to four and roughly, I mean, basically, he comes down here, drops off the bottles, tells us what we need to do, leads, and then it's our responsibility to get the samples and get them to Comber City within fourteen days for the lead and copper. Um, the other one that we take monthly, we didn't do at all. So basically, he'll come down and deliver stuff, but he doesn't go and collect samples or get them there, we have to do all the paperwork. Which was a question for Mr. Coca, I don't know if the, you'd be willing to do the paperwork associated with all the water stuff and.
Uh, if I could get on the portal, because I know you have to get an account on all of them.
Which regardless, I could still do the paperwork if we didn't have to do the footwork to go get all the samples and get it to where we need it on time.
I mean, I think between these two so far, it's kind of apples and apples, you know, if he's willing to do some of the collections and do, you know, the samples and do some of the paperwork um, for a thousand twenty-five, or this one by January first, it's gonna be eight hundred and fifty already and then eighty, eighty-five dollars an hour, which that's gonna be more than eighty-five dollars an hour just to drive here. You know, I, I think it, it's gonna be relatively close.
There's more than two hours involved with coming and going.
Right, coming and going, right, and so that doesn't even, you know, count. That's, yeah, right. So I think it's, you know, sounds like Mr. Coca is willing to offer more services, correct? For, um, that fun, with that amount of funding.
And then we have Richard.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. How you doing, sir?
Do you know everybody or?
No, I do not.
Frank, Carol?
Down the street.
Oh, yes, okay.
Carol? I know Sarah.
I know Sarah.
Monica?
I met her earlier.
Angela. And Mr. Romero. Now tell us a little bit about yourself.
I've been doing heating and air conditioning for twelve, thirteen years. Um, um, looking to get into something new.
You did welding?
Yes, I also did welding too. Did welding for almost a year, little over a year.
Are you a certified welder?
Yes. And I also work on a ranch up, um, up in the canyon here.
Are you looking for full overtime?
Full-time. Ready to learn, ready to do whatever we gotta do to help out.
You're, you're hourly, starting hourly rate at seventeen dollars an hour?
Okay.
Wait, what do you?
I was asking twenty.
Oh, I was looking at your TJ ones, that's what you started with TJ?
Yes.
Okay, that's your heating and air conditioning experience there.
Yes, ma'am. And that was my start off and then when I, when I left there, I was actually making twenty-two.
Questions?
What is a mini X?
Mini X, it's a mini excavator?
If we couldn't, um, give you forty hours right away, would you be willing to come on part-time or are you gonna have to seek other employment?
I can, I can.
To get that full-time that you need?
If it, if it starts out as, as, you know, part-time is fine because I also work up the canyon, like I said. So that would be great, you know, but I really, really would like to get forty if I could.
Do you have a problem, um, cuz again, I guess, is the weekend, what checking, what, what has to be checked on the weekend? What?
The chores, just call them the chores.
The chores and how, how, I mean, really, how long do those chores take on the weekends, I mean, on any given day?
Couple hours, huh?
Yeah, always, that's what they always talk about, two hours or something.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Romero's been helping him out, right? With the sewer pump?
Look at that look.
That's an hour and a half, though.
No, I'm saying, he's been helping him out, right, on that, so.
I, I've been doing the sewer pump now, Frank and I.
Mr. Franklin.
It's an hour and a half. You're chasing cows, you better get the cows out of there.
Yeah. No, I, I wouldn't have.
You know, I mean, if these guys can maybe help pick up the slack so you're not working seven days a week and maybe alternate weekends, would you be okay working, you know, like two weekends a month for a couple hours a day?
Whatever we gotta do. I'm open. Work every weekend if I had to.
And then didn't somebody mention he's willing to work towards a water license?
Yes, yes.
I think it's, is this kind of separate though from the water license part of this, it's just actually more of an application for general maintenance, correct?
Any more questions?
You don't have a problem, you know, we drug test, you don't have a problem with that?
No. Not at all. Nothing in my system, not even no alcohol.
Are we doing a ninety-day probationary period or we just gonna?
Can do that, I mean.
Normally, we do a ninety-day probationary period to see how people work out, if they don't work out.
I mean, it's actually work out through mutual agreement? Yeah, I mean, if, is that in, in the employee handbook, I'm sorry, I still forgot you, so, yeah, then, then that's just, you know, so you understand, there's.
That's pretty much standard, yeah, yeah, ninety days is pretty much standard for any.
It's gonna be, uh, probationary periods, you know, you do. Um, so do we need to decide on him separate then from the two water gentlemen?
Yes. How soon could you start?
Whenever you need me, next week?
Well, if you'd like to go down, take a drug test.
Two weeks.
What does it take, two or three days for the result?
Yeah, whatever. Start next week or the week after, it doesn't really, you know, like I start next week, then the week after, it doesn't, you know.
Let's get the drug test behind us and then we'll, we'll be in touch.
We need to make the motion to?
Well, how about Mr. Coca, is it, would apply to him too?
Sorry, Bob.
Mr. Coca, does this apply to him too?
Um, isn't that different, that's a contract deal, this is employment.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need to do anything?
Well, we'll have to make two different motions, we'd have to make a motion for Richard's employment and then we would have to make a motion for Mr. Coca's contract services.
And do you have, uh, do you have a contract that you write up, that you have on file?
I have before, one of the things I had talked to her last time when, uh, when Virgil quit, uh, the company I worked part-time for, he don't like me doing a contract cuz he said I'm cheaper than him. So, uh, couple, what, one, two, three, four of them I had, if I had something before I started with him, it's okay, but if I was to do one after, uh, he gets pretty upset about it, he goes off.
So he's got a conflict of interest for you, with you working with us?
Clause.
Okay, cuz.
Yeah, Wayne had a thing we had to sign. Nah, you know, you.
A non-compete?
Yes, non-compete.
Yeah.
At least business.
So that could really open up an issue if we brought him on.
See, that's why I had us like the part-time because of all this, he thought I was contracted with La Vida, but that's, that's my regular job, so he didn't say anything, but, uh.
Cuz I mean, we can't bring anybody on without either an employment agreement or a contract.
Yeah.
That could be an issue, if that's an issue for, you know, somebody else that you're working for.
Yeah, cuz I know that one time when Luke put in for it, uh, they had called down here and uh, talked to Tyra a couple times, but then Luke ended up getting him because like I said, his thing would be way over, it would be pretty high. We, we, I, we, we charge by the hour, by the mileage, everything.
All right, so should we deal, let's, let's go ahead and get the motion made, um, and we'll come back to this, so let's see. So, uh, we need to get a motion for Richard, let's get that one finished. So, uh, yeah, I made the motion to who hired, uh, Richard, how do you pronounce your last name?
Ringan.
Ringan, Richard Ringan, uh, pending the drug test.
I'm taking the motion.
Row call please.
Um, what are we hiring, part-time, full-time?
Um, I'd say twenty hours to start, yeah.
Cause you still have your other job, correct?
Well, I, I.
I mean, it's some point, I'm sure it's going to lead to full-time, but for what our finances are right now, part-time is what we could offer you, if you're willing to take that.
Understandable. Yeah, cuz I could still work up the canyon.
Twenty an hour.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Broadus?
Yes.
Ms. Downman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And he'll come and pick up paperwork? Are you for a drug test?
Um, all in the morning, this evening, get it scheduled. Are you free tomorrow, depending on when they can get them in, anytime?
Whenever we can get them in, no big deal. Just give me a call, if I don't answer right away, just leave a message because I don't get service up there.
Okay. Okay, I will call this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then back to. Mr. Coca. Mr. Coca. I'm not quite sure what to do on that, because we can't. Well, I guess we, line of deduction, we just hire him part-time. As an actual employee?
Yeah.
We'd have to do that in order for there not to be a conflict of interest. Okay, but then he's getting taxes and everything taken out of his fees. All right. Suggestions? Help us out here.
Would that be?
It should probably be charged from the, you know, wanting the twenty-five an hour.
That is like.
Although, he wants the twenty-five an hour on top of his, you know?
No.
So, just strictly, well, that's what I was trying to get from him.
Contract lawyer.
The twenty-five an hour, I think he, okay, clarify this first. Okay, let's say we brought you on as an employee, so to not, you know, have a conflict with your other employment. So, what are you gonna want for that? Because I don't think that's gonna, the twenty-five dollars an hour you're asking for, is that? I don't know, I guess I'm confused.
No, I understand what you mean, it's like, you know, I won't be, you know, no, I know, like, that's a contract, I could always give him a call, and I'll see what he says. I mean, because I know there's one, there was one place in Walsenburg that I was doing, and he refused to do it, that was at the Best Western. He didn't wanna deal with it, so he told me, well, just keep doing it.
Anthony, would you wanna maybe research it a little bit, and see what might work best for you?
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
I mean, are you carrying your own liability insurance and everything as well?
No.
Being self-employed?
No, because I, like I said, right now, I only, I have one on myself, because all the other ones I don't, you don't have no more. I mean, they either switched to something, or they got rid of, like, three of them I had in Pueblo. Governor Polo said if you couldn't, how was it, raise the water rates, but then you had to have an operator, and then, but you could give them free water, not charge the town, or a trailer park, which is what it was, and then you could like raise the lot rent, it's like, given, all of these campground's are going with free water now.
Okay, what I'm asking about is, like, do you have, as a water operator, do you have to carry liability insurance, though?
I never really have, because I just, you know, never made like major big things, what we had to do usually was.
Would you be opposed to getting, I mean, I just recently checked in, you know, and it might be a little bit different for you, but I mean, would you be opposed to getting a liability insurance policy for yourself to work for the town?
Probably, I don't know, I'd have, you know, checks, you know.
Okay. Yeah, again, I think it kind of comes back to just doing a little research, you know, finding out if there would be a conflict, and considered, you know, competing against your other job, or employer, whatever he is, or you're contracting with, or whatever, and then maybe get back to us as soon as possible, would you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so we will. Are we going to table a water, I mean, the water license person?
Next week.
Next week, yeah, I mean, it's pending, and we gotta have one in thirty days. What was the, what was the date of the thirty days expiration?
I know she gave us thirty days, but I don't remember the actual date that.
Who was it you talked to?
I sent you an email.
Can we, we?
Now, wasn't anybody here?
What's that?
It wasn't anybody from Trinidad?
No, I mean, no, these are for Kira or Kyra?
I think Kyra.
I think that's who it was that sent this.
Avery?
Well, I think we should get, no, we're waiting to see.
I know it was thirty days on that. Right, we just need to see the date of that email. October third, so we still got a couple weeks.
Two weeks.
So, I think we can save the table until next week, give him some time to do some more research. Let's make sure we get him on the agenda for next week. I make a motion to table the water operator until next meeting, regular meeting.
The regular meeting.
Can I get your second? Row call please.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Braus?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
The approval to, of bills to pay. Angela and I came in and worked with Stephanie and Sarah, and we paid some of the bills. These are bills back from June, and probably further back if we did.
We had to come in and basically void all the checks that were sitting there with the prior mayor's signature, and then pull each of the bills, and we just spread what little bit of money we had around as fast as we could. We totaled ten thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-six cents. We had a beginning balance of thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars on one account. So, we, and that was pending, knowing that the utility money was coming in.
Right.
What we have for the board to approve is in the amount of ten thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-one cents?
Right, yes.
And that includes SIRS?
Yep.
Five hundred to SIRS.
Oh, but you're talking about, okay.
The one.
It's a correct.
We did.
You and I am.
Okay.
I'm the catch-up. So, with that being said, so thirty-five thousand, we paid ten thousand, so that leaves twenty-five-ish, and that was going with a really low estimate. There was over thirty K going out in utility billing, and we were anticipating collecting fifteen grand of that right away. So, that fifteen grand was part of that, but it's actually about thirty grand total, probably should be coming in from utility billing. So, I think we still have another twenty-five to thirty thousand that we'll look at, you know, when we come in to pay bills again. That we'll have to work with.
That is what we're asking, we went through invoices, and we matched everything up, and that's where we came up with, we couldn't pay everything in full. Some, the little bills we did, but the larger bills, you know, we sent five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, but we're just trying to show good faith that we're going to pay.
And so, we're gonna try to do this every two weeks, and just keep spreading the money, making sure our accounts aren't going negative. And again, it's all about the good faith, showing that all these creditors, all these vendors, that, you know, we are making an effort, you know, to pay our bills, and do what we're supposed to be doing, just until the money frees up a little bit more.
So, right now, what we're asking the council to approve are the bills that Angela and I worked through, and that's in the amount of ten thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Forty-one, that six or one? Six, forty-six.
And so, these ones here that she has in pink are still really need to paid, are the most pressing coming up for the next row of bills.
Right, which we can come, if we can come this week, and then so for next regular meeting, we can present it to the council for approval, we'll look through them again, we'll go from the bottom, and where also, I learned yesterday that the town should be receiving like thirty-two thousand dollars from the COVID relief. The town actually got qualified for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and they paid it in quarters, I believe, is how they paid it. So, we have one payment left of thirty-two thousand dollars coming in.
We just don't know when, but the girl, we're gonna check and see when those previous deposits have hit the account, so I don't know if it's gonna come at the beginning of Q4, or the end of Q4, but just keep that in mind going forward, we'll have that money to get caught up on some bills as well, or use part of it to pay back that USDA check that bounced, you know, whatever. Know that we've got some extra funding coming in from that. So, I guess what's on the table right now is that we need to approve the ten thousand that we, that Erlendo and I, and Stephanie and Sarah worked through two weeks ago to get paid, so if we can get that approved, then we can look at these ones coming up. I make a motion? Would you have a question?
No, I move that we approve that payment of that ten thousand, and change whatever it was.
I second, or can I second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Braus?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Okay, and Stephanie, do you have a total on what these peak highlights are?
Yes, it's seventeen thousand.
Oh, sorry, just on me up.
Yeah, I'll share you that.
Seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty cents.
Okay. That we'll go through. Okay, so, yeah, we'll go through, and by the next meeting, we'll have, exactly, again, we'll maybe a couple of them, we might not be able to pay quite full, but almost full, so we'll go through that, we want to do that Thursday or Friday? No, meeting next week, we're talking this week, meeting's not till next week, we're talking about me and her going through it with the girls this Thursday. Thursday afternoon, good? Yeah. Thursday afternoon's good for me. Okay.
So, let's go, Cora requests. We found out that they don't have to be certified to do Cora request. They just have to be trained, and neither one of the girls are trained to do Cora request right now. So, my suggestion is that we get some training, I'm not sure if we train the both of them, or one.
How long is the training course?
I don't know.
Is that something that Dola does, or?
She may. Did you shake your head no? Did you shake your head no?
I think it really kind of depends on how long the training course is, let's, you know, maybe do one, and then do the other, and maybe not both at the same time.
Probably, I don't know, but we have to get somebody for a training.
Right, we do know. I mean, so right now, out of the two of you, who's actually probably, even though I know you're close land, who has the most extra time, and I say extra loosely.
Neither one of us really do, honestly, neither one of us really do.
And from what we were told by Mr. Sam White, he's the one that said we don't need to be certified, and he didn't really know of any training, he just told us to, you know, purchase the Sunshine Law and some booklet off of CML, and just read that and go by that, but I mean, I've downloaded it, it's a big booklet, I haven't had time to look at it, but as far as we've looked, we can't find any training. And he basically said, just read that, and follow the guidelines in there, but.
Was there a specific, he said, it talks about Sunshine Law stuff, but was there a specific section?
Yeah, there was, Sunshine Law and Cora requests, or Open Records Act, that's what it was, the Sunshine Law and Open Record Act booklet. So, I did download that, and basically, we just haven't had time to sit down and read it, either of us. I don't think Sarah's had time, I haven't, but basically, I mean.
How big is the section?
It was a big booklet, I didn't even really look down July, I mean, with everything else.
I mean, is it like, five or six chapters on, you know, I mean, is that something that? Is that on the search list?
Yep, and it was free, it was, we're a member, so I was able to download it for free. And I mean, if you guys want copies of it, I'll look at it tomorrow, but with.
I would say just that section, but, I mean, yeah, I mean, we have got to get on top of that. So, what do you guys have to do it? It has to be done. One of it, if you want us to decide for you who's gonna do it, we can do that. If you can't, but like, right now, I need to know which, if one of you can't step up, then we're gonna decide for you.
Oh, I can, I can train on it, yeah.
I think if it's just a book training, and it's, you know, five, six chapters, I think read it, get through it, and then by the meeting next week, put the current open Cora requests on the agenda for next week, get them done. That's the best I got. Do you want a table of Cora requests? Well, I don't think we need to necessarily.
Basically, we just need to read the book, and between the two of us, figure out how to answer them, so we'll buy next week.
Yeah, I guess.
Have an answer of what we've answered.
Have an answer of what we answered.
Or I guess, maybe we should try to just figure, and do it to you, and make sure that we're doing it right.
And I think you got the same email I did in, so I haven't been to government, where they did their, for USDA, they did the report, and so, there's some things that for privacy of the employee, or they're blocked out, and then, like, I don't know if they blocked out dollar amounts, but there's stuff on there that was blocked out, so that is part, I guess, on the training, and it tells you, like, what can be released in more time. That's, I think, the main.
I think, if it's just a book, I mean, I can't imagine it being, you know, more than twenty pages on that section. I mean, I guess I could be wrong, it is the government, but I think you guys need to read it, and start filling out the Cora requests, and bring what you have completed to the next meeting, and then we go over it. Does that sound like a plan to everybody? Just do the best you can, you know?
That's all you can do.
Right, just do the best you can, and then, yeah, go from there.
So, basically, we can just fill them out, get them ready, show it to you before we send it?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be so better.
Well, and that's the thing is too, is that we'll have the attorney by then. You know, I mean, I got, I was contacted by the state auditor's office, I was contacted by their legal team for a Cora request, and so their attorney. and so their attorney, um, you know, kinda asked me about, you know, some things, and just made sure, so it's maybe something that the new attorney can just help us make sure that if there's anything that needs to be redacted.
Right.
That doesn't have to be supplied with the Cora requests, then we can black that out.
Yeah, because there was on that report, there was signatures that were blacked out, and and I think that's probably one of the other important things on that Cora request is, you know.
So I think, you know, again, the attorney will definitely be able to help us with that. So yeah, I would just say, read what you can, fill them out as best as you can, and then bring them with to the next meeting, and the attorney, if, you know, we hire him, and that, he should be here, and then or maybe we can email him, you know, if we bring on the attorney.
We can, and so we hired him, so the board chose to interview, so we'll do interviews with him.
Okay, that's, and then my first proposal is where it stands then, do the best you can, just do it, just start working on it. I don't know, do I need to make a motion for that?
That you appointed Sarah? I guess you would have to make a motion that you appointed Sarah.
Okay, make a motion that, uh, yeah, Sarah is the appointed Cora request officer, person, appointee, whatever it needs to be.
Brokaw?
Mayor Pro temp?
Yep.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
F, like it, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, I have not had a chance to look into this further, but when I first came on, I was hearing this in the plethora of information that was being dumped on me, that there's additional funding out there that comes to the town once we've submitted the yearly budgets. And as far as I understand it, those have not been completed for at least two to three years. What do you guys know about those?
Honestly, I, I don't. So Tara Marshall, she called, um, the tax assessor's office for that, because like, we have a rough draft on that twenty-nineteen budget. So she called the tax assessor and asked if maybe, because it was almost complete, so is it just a signature they need on that, the letter of intent, is that what he needs left?
No, that's audits, that's completely separate.
I mean, not audits, so the audits have, I'm sorry, the audits have to be done. And so in order the tax assessor said that the way their system is set up, they can't release just partial money.
Right.
But she asked me to call and talk to her and see if maybe she would release to some, once some of those audits were done.
Right, but that's not, that's separate from the budgets.
The budget, she's, they're there, is what I was told, Bob and I were told right back. The only thing is they need to be formatted, they're on the computer. Now, I can come back and get in the computer and look at it and see, and, and there's a number I can call and ask, and then they can.
Okay, 'cause I can help with that, because I mean, you know, especially if we can export it into Excel.
I can take you there.
You know, we can do that, but I need to know exactly from, and I believe it is through Dola, that those budgets have to be submitted.
Right.
That releases those funds, so if we need to talk to Tara again?
She's trying to get, that's what I said, she talked to the assessor, but like, I said, until we get those audits. She said even that one audit, that will get started.
Okay, so but you're saying that we can't get the money for these budgets unless the audits are done, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Right. Then Tara said she was gonna send me a form, and she was gonna try and help out to get those budgets done, because what I already have, then she said we could get them figured out and get them done.
Well, Bob and I were told that they're in the computer, correct? And it's just a, a matter of being formatted to send over, and then there's a, a business card there of who it's going to go to in the state.
Okay.
Once we get that formatted.
So, okay, so you, I mean, is it a possibility that, and again, you know, we gotta get on this Jim Ray thing, and his emails.
Right.
You know, he's asking me to sign off and agree that I'm gonna be the officer and, you know, oversee these past uh, financials, and I'm not okay with that at all. I'm not okay taking responsibility from these past financials and being responsible for them.
So, my question is, who would be responsible then?
I don't know. I don't have an answer.
I wasn't here when it happened, but somebody has to sign, there's gotta be two signatures on his letter of intent, or letter of.
Letter of.
I'll have to look.
That one. Uh, there has to be two signatures, so that goes towards the twenty-nineteen audit, because we have the, a draft.
We're almost there on the twenty-nineteen, this is how long it has taken.
So what exactly does the, the signatures do?
It basically just says, a- as far as I understood it, is that you're saying, I think, what he found and what he completed is to the best of his knowledge and our knowledge is, is true and correct as it can be, and that, and then there's another signature that going forward, you know, we're gonna have oversight and committee on the financials going forward, which I have way less of a problem with that letter than signing off on the past stuff.
Thing being Angela, I mean, you weren't here, probably no one here was.
No, this is twenty-nineteen, so we weren't here, but somebody, in order for us to go forward, it has to get done, correct? Somebody has to sign off on it. It has to be two signatures.
And can it be somebody from the office?
Usually, I think it was the mayor, it came to the board, the board said yes, or whatever, if I remember, it's been a while, but, and then the mayor, and the mayor pro temp are usually the two that.
I think the mayor pro temp has been here longer. I believe.
Than that the mayor pro temp signed first.
That's what I say.
They're killing me.
I'm just trying to help you out there. Because none of us have been here. Either that, or somebody from the office, and.
I, I believe it has to be even if it's the mayor, but it still has to be somebody from the office, if I'm not mistaken, on. Do you have it, Angela?
I'm looking, I've got so many emails, it's stupid.
But I do believe that it has to be, so it would be, I would say Sarah.
Would be Sarah and your son.
And Gerald.
The bottom.
You know what they say about seniority, who's been here longer.
Get out of there. Here's the deal, what what, what are the ramifications of this? I mean, so what are you actually signing? Angela, can you answer that?
I'm trying to look, and actually, so I can read it to you. We're kinda getting off off subject here, and, and I think we need to all print things out and bring it to the next meeting, uh, this was specifically about the budgets, and I didn't know that the budgets were tied to the audits, or otherwise I would've come more prepared.
But they just table the, the budgets until next meeting.
Yeah, and then I'll bring these engage, I'll print out these engagement letters, and Jim Ray wants to have another conversation with me, either Thursday or Friday.
And Angela, ask him.
What's the implication, you know, okay, yep, yep, we'll do.
So I motion to table the budget twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four to the next, uh, meeting.
Good lord, we're gonna have to start at four o'clock next.
Yeah.
Meeting, five o'clock.
Right.
So will I.
I second.
Mayor Pro temp?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
School address.
I have got here office of two resolutions that concern the Aguilar Gymnasium, and I cannot find anything in there states that you can't change the address or add to it.
So, we were told, Bob and I were told yesterday, that it couldn't be changed because it is a designated.
Historical building.
Right.
What's, what's the purpose again of changing the school address?
What?
Yeah.
Emergency?
It's a fire, the new fire suppression system they put in, so if they get the alarm that goes out, then the fire department that hits, because it goes to Trinidad, then they know exactly which building it's, that the alarm is coming from, if it's coming from the gym or the school, so the gym, they just wanna do four twenty-eight or four twenty-nine, that's it. Just so they know which building, they can put it in the system, I guess, or something like that.
As long as there's no structural change to the building, there's no problem.
We're just talking about putting an A or a B on the address, that's what we're talking about? Okay, oh, that's a no-brainer. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I hope we're everybody, but we wanted to spit this on the minutes that everybody
Right.
um, was asked, 'cause they needed to get that turned in, so, um.
Okay, so, you want us to do a motion, or you want to?
I think, yeah, let's go ahead and just make it official.
Make a motion to approve the A and B address change for the school gymnasium.
Yeah, make a motion to add the address change to the gym.
I second.
Mayor Pro temp?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is resignation. On Friday, I received an email from, uh, Ms. Avila under the, her resignation, and so I just need for the board to vote to accept or decline the resignation.
I motion to accept the resignation.
And get a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro temp?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Among, I have, I think, I have a, do you see one of your papers, or?
No, I.
I have a resignation from, um, Mr. Dean Belly. And motion to approve or decline.
Why did he design?
He didn't say, he just said he, it was effective immediately, uh, yesterday, and.
I motion to approve it.
Second.
Brokaw?
Mayor Pro temp?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Thanks for your service, Dave.
And.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Can I have?
Not a mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are we not supposed to motion to put an ad up for Allen Court? For a maintenance supervisor? To save up for his life?
We should.
Yeah, um, well, I mean, pending this gentleman's.
Oh, right, on that one.
He's, he's gonna be a, a worker, not a utility supervisor. There's a difference.
Yeah, um, the clerk, that's a whole different story. Um, maybe we should discuss that next week.
And in the meantime, although I have one, a job description, and I don't, I'll check with these two on a job description, if they have one on file, if not, I'll by that time, or I don't know, you know, I may have some help legally. So.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Sorry.
Brokaw?
Mayor Pro temp?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Ms. Galman?
Ten day.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes, I.
Linda, do you guys want a copy of these resolutions? You don't have them here?
Everybody fell asleep, they, they don't know that there, it's all adjourned, it's all done, it's all over with.
I love how they amend special agendas when it's, you know, fitting to their agenda. 'Cause they didn't put it online or nothing, you know, they didn't. They tabled most of the agenda, we'll, we'll discuss it again in a week. Same fucking thing over and over, you know?
You sure? I'm surprised you didn't jump out of your seat a few times there.
You know, I was, I was.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm surprised.
Well, I took notes ahead, should I keep my hand in this? Keep my hand, just like, keep it up.
Yeah, maybe that was my problem tonight, I don't know.
Making the house, I did.
I do.
Yeah.
It's not your, right, I have you on board.
This is what we're going through right now, I don't know if I'll tell you.
Where is it? I want to work.
I don't know, when I just looked around, I seen the right.
Well, that'd bother you, he will fuck you all up.
Oh, he, he just lives right down the block from me.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, see you.
See, I was waiting for you to go over here, good thing we paid, I paid you some thousand dollars, too.
Oh, I know.
Uh, they had, they got two units out every night. Three units got there tonight. First, they're you people. These guys went through thongs up in there. And just. You know, for a minute, fuck with the guy, what do you guys think? I, I didn't feel that, maybe. You feel accomplished, that's accomplished.
We got standing water, we got rain and snows, and that's gonna cost, that's gonna cost me.
Please, it ain't chalk. That shit eats concrete. You feel season, yeah? Well, try again next week, it'll be the same agenda. Table had a little other.
I wonder if Bob is gonna be on there next week?
I see they amended that special meeting, but they didn't remember to put Robert on and get him on. They accept the power of the resignation. I'd like to see that letter, somebody should be requested.
Pretty sure something was supposed to be done about that ramp, but it just never got done, oh yeah, it got tabled.
It got tabled, we were gonna fix the ramp, but it got tabled. We'll get to it sometime, probably next year, after all this space. See, we got so much new business, we can't deal with the old business. So we just table it and then we don't have to deal with it no more.
Bye. Bye.
There's two of them.
Bye. Bye. We had more here, get out, how many did we have? Dude.
Five total.
No, it's three, you got. Is that another unit, no. Five total units. Wonder how much that cost the town? And for what reason?
What, why do we need five units for a fucking, that's weird to anybody else? Like, this ain't Detroit, y'all, like, this is the whole fucking town right here.
You just saw the whole fucking thing. Oh, bro.
Fucking hilarious. Yeah. Fuck, no good, y'all. Yeah.
Did you, did you catch the raises that they were looking for?
Yeah.
You're waiting to see me, aren't you?
Yep, the new maintenance guy? You too, bro.
Good luck, man, have a good night.
You too. I gotta work in the afternoon, I gotta have a house to paint. Yep. I've been painting Dave's house. Later, brother. All right, I'm shutting this down.